From, at least I'm not aware. Have we heard anything from Alder Abbas, Karen?
He's excused.
Okay. All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Karen, if you can call the roll.
All right. President Furman?
President.
Vice President Curry?
Here.
Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Conklin is excused. Alder Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Here.
And Alder Abbas is excused. You have quorum.
Thank you very much. I am trying to load it, but not quickly enough. Do we have any registrants? Doesn't sound like it. So then we don't need any IT information. But so, so thank you. We'll move to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve last meeting minutes.
And a second from Alder Bennett. Is that what I see? Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns, corrections on the minutes? Not seeing any. I'm going to assume unanimous consent unless I hear otherwise. Okay, we will move on to a public comment. Obviously, we heard we do not have public comment. So we will move to disclosures and recusals. Do any members of the body have any required disclosures or accusations? Not seeing any. We'll move right into our items to be considered for this evening. We have the first agenda item is twenty, as the 2023 council meeting dates. We did discuss this at a previous meeting, but there is an updated draft. This will be introduced and approved at our next council meeting, depending on our feedback from this evening. I'm happy. Karen, do you have the ability to pull that up easily if people want to see that? But the goal for what was what is being introduced is one to include all of the holidays. So it's an easy place for people to know here are the holidays that are prohibited under our ordinance. It is my understanding, I believe staff has a seven or eight year spreadsheet now with all of those dates. So each year, it'll be pretty easy to know what those long list of dates are that we should be excluding. And I believe there was a minor tweak in May on this. Karen, I don't know if you had an opportunity to find that, if you want to talk about what changed from the last time besides adding those holidays.
Yeah, I am pulling it up. Here. Okay, um, yeah. So here it is with the holidays. Sadly, my attempt to avoid three meetings in a row was unsuccessful. And I had to, I brought it back to being in line with ordinance.
One of, one of the advantages of that, for whatever it's worth, is that new council will be sworn in on April 18th. There is an opportunity for them maybe to get a breather and not have an incredibly intense first meeting like the class did in 2021, and have another meeting obviously on the 25th, and then another meeting one week later. So it certainly is a lot there. But hopefully it does give alders a little bit of breathing room on what's going to face them, you know, the new alders, that is, when they start. Questions, comments? Alder Foster?
Yeah, it looks good to me. I would, the other, I think, benefit of those three meetings in a row will just be for the next council president and CCEC selection and getting that started, et cetera. So I think that's, I think it's a real good thing actually to pack some meetings as close as possible there.
I appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Figaro Cole?
So I had looked at a attached document that was in these on the agenda item one or two, whichever we're in right now. And it just, the location is the building. So does that mean we're not doing hybrid? Or we're not deciding hybrid for the next council? What does that mean?
I think, so I, you know, we will continue to do exactly what we've been doing now, which is the council will vote on where it is. I think we should probably change the location on that attached sheet to say to be determined by council. I think that they use probably a template that's been used for years. And, you know, a nice cheat sheet, but if, if the actual ordinance that will be approved by the council would not be, would not specify a location. So that's just a cheat sheet.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Yep. Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, our, our hybrid meetings will be in 201. And then it also just lets you know that we weren't able to book 201 for, after 400 days. Basically, we can only book, turns out, with the new system, we can only book 201 400 days in advance, up to 400 days in advance. And so there's a little asterix on there to let you know that we'll be continuing to work on that. But just so you know, so that's the logic there. But if you want, I know they're interested in getting this on the agenda. So they need me to put things in ASAP tonight after our, after your meeting. I can try to make some wording changes tonight. Just let me know what you, what you all would like.
Yeah, I, I think the clear thing, Karen, is we're not actually approving locations. We can't approve locations. We don't have the ability to do that. That's something that, you know, the council needs to do. So I would just say, you know, locations to be determined. You could put a note on the bottom that says, you know, October 3rd through the end of the year, you know, can't be scheduled yet. So I don't think you need to work too hard on, on a quick tweak of that draft. Alder Foster?
Yeah, one way to do it fast might be to just change the column header from location to like room reservation. Because it seems like that's what this actually is. And that way, we're not asserting anything about actual location.
I like that. That's a very easy hack. One of the things I noticed this year when looking at Thanksgiving is that we are having a meeting this year in 2022 on Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So if anybody was traveling, that does make travel a little bit harder. We're going to do that again in 2023. I don't recall if we've done that in the past. I haven't done enough research to look at that. Does anybody else see that as a concern like I did when I looked at our calendar the other day to see if I was making Thanksgiving travel plans? Not seeing any? So that's fine.
Julianne has something.
Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if it wouldn't be a concern if people are traveling? I mean, people might not have plans yet.
Well, I would, yeah, I would assume nobody has plans for Thanksgiving 2023 yet. And if somebody does, I'd be incredibly impressed. But, you know, I know just personally, I'm weird and I prefer, I would prefer not traveling on a Wednesday of, you know, Thanksgiving. And luckily, my job gives me that flexibility. It's hard if there's a council meeting that Tuesday. I don't know how easy it is to tweak that day and how strongly other people feel about that. But Alder Figaro Cole?
So I imagine that at the minimum, we will, we will try not to put agenda items underneath the majority, the super majority vote. If we could, right? I mean, because.
I, I mean, Alder Figaro Cole, to be honest, I mean, everybody except for the president and vice president can, can be hybrid. I mean, there's an expectation that the president and vice president be there. But quite frankly, I mean, we have the ability to do a hybrid meeting. And so if somebody did need to go visit family, there's, there's certainly an ability for, you know, the entire, you know, most of the body to be virtual. So it's probably not that big of a deal. Alder Foster?
There's also the ability for that council to make it virtual only, just like we, you know, just did. So I think leave it on there for now, and they can always change it too if they need to.
So another excellent one about, about reminding people about virtual. Thank you. All right. Any other, any thoughts on the schedule? I, staff worked really hard. So thank you, Karen. Thank you for everybody else in the council office that helped you with this. This is a really difficult thing to figure out, especially with all the holidays we have now. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve 2023's calendar schedule.
Thank you. A second. Unless I see otherwise, I'm going to assume unanimous consent. All right, perfect. Moving on to our next item, which should be pretty quick, the 2023 CCEC schedule. Now that we have a somewhat confirmed calendar for, for our council meetings. We will be one of the first, I guess, to try to schedule committee meetings for next year. Does anybody have any preference when it comes to Wednesdays or Thursdays? I was going to come up with calendar, but essentially, you know, I think the goal would be to, for, for next year, for at least until April. I don't know if anybody has strong opinions on scheduling it for the whole year. Obviously, the next CCEC could change that. Anybody have any preferences on me just picking, you know, the, the Wednesday before or the Thursday before common council meetings for the common council executive committee to meet? Alder Heck?
So are you saying you wouldn't take into account committee conflicts?
There are no committee conflicts, kind of. I mean, nobody's really put dates on the calendar yet. I mean, there's traditions, obviously. You know, Plan Commission, obviously, being a great example of a committee that has, you know, a tradition of meeting on a particular day. I assume some of the other committees try to stick to, you know, some sort of tradition. But I, there's no, there's no, nobody has put anything on the calendar yet.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking of committees I'm on that meet on Wednesdays and Thursdays where the members of the public on the committees definitely have tradition built into their habits. Plan Commission, by the way, on Monday decided to stay with Monday for now, even though there was discussion of changing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I think there is obviously an ability to say CCEC is meeting on this day. Please don't do that, you know, as a courtesy. Vice President Curry?
My personal preference would be Wednesdays. It's not as often, but Housing Strategy Committee, which Alder Figaro Cole and I are, on occurs, I think it's fourth Thursday in the evening. But other than that, the work.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And obviously, today is a Wednesday, and we've got just about everybody. So it's another example of Wednesday being good. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I have to disagree with that. Just, I was, I was with Debbie. I was talking about how much overlap I have with my committee schedule. Yeah, I, I have like, like Wednesdays and Thursdays at this point is not the best because on Wednesdays, sometimes I have PSRC. And then I also, on some Wednesday, Wednesdays have UDC. And now on Thursdays, I have like just a shit ton of overlap with like other committees. Like, I don't know, I hate Thursdays, which is, our meetings have generally been on Thursday, and it's been like hard.
Yeah.
I don't know, Tuesday meetings, but like honestly, like from being on CCEC last year, like the, I didn't, the, the CCEC meeting before the council meeting was like the best time I felt for me. Otherwise, it's just so much overlap.
Appreciate that feedback. Alder Figaro Cole?
So can we just maybe schedule three months ahead or something, whatever the limit is, and maybe use the, there's not that many of us. We, we all know our committee commitments and, and help you build the base on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also willing, if we pick these days to mail, but now have staff mail those committees and say, if you can avoid these dates, it would be appreciated. You know, we have the ability to do that. I mean, you know, the, very specifically, so, so we can, you know, at least get this out a little bit more. We're going to be talking about future agenda items. There's a reason why we're trying to meet on a Wednesday or Thursday before the council meeting. One of them is, is to give us ourselves some more room. I find CCEC meetings before council meetings absolutely exhausting. Because, you know, we're talking about organizational stuff, really getting into it, and all of a sudden you have to jump into a council meeting. And the second thing is I do want to see if we're going to structure a CCEC to give a little bit more input on the agenda going forward. We'll have some topics to talk about that in the future. So there's a lot of value, I think, in having it, you know, not, not the same day as the council meeting. And it does help with the agenda greatly, not having, you know, the recommendations come in at the last minute. Alder Foster?
I, I think it might be helpful, unless it already exists, to try and put together what those traditions are, at least the, you know, well-established ones for BCCs. I mean, you know, they mostly have a certain day. And, I mean, just as part of our, like, BCC admin work and sort of thinking about BCC reorg and all of that, I mean, it's sort of feeling like tail wagging the dog here a little bit. And like, we won't have, I mean, the next CCEC doesn't even exist. Their committee assignments don't exist, et cetera. So the idea of like, not being able to schedule CCC meetings or trying to schedule them around other committee meetings, like, I wonder if there's some, an opportunity here if we just try to get an inventory as a starting point, and then look, and maybe we should be asserting CCC on either Wednesday or Thursday, and just consciously know, you know, where we're going to have conflicts, and either, you know, accept them, or try and maybe just be a little deliberate about it as well, rather than feeling like we just have to, that we're at, we're at the, like, mercy of the committee's schedule. I mean, we, we could try and put some shape to it. So, I don't know.
No, I think that's good. And so, you know, I, I will, I mean, I, I don't want to add a ton more work to, to staff. And so I'll coordinate with Karen. Maybe there's a way I can help with this as well. We have a great spreadsheet of all the committees. And so I think, you know, sending out a note to the, the staff and saying, could you let us know what your tradition is? We're trying to figure out, you know, you know, how this is all balanced and, and the right way. But yeah, I mean, we have no idea, obviously, who'll be on the next CCEC and exactly what committees they're going to be on. And so I think there's some ability to put in a better process at this point. We also want to make sure that they're aware of those holidays and that they shouldn't be scheduling things during those holidays, et cetera. So I'll work with staff on that. But appreciate the feedback. We're not going to take any sort of action on this tonight. But I think this feedback is helpful to figure out a next step. And this will be back on the agenda. So we could talk a little bit more about what other things look like and maybe some encouragement we can have towards other committees. As a reminder, the committees are here to work for us, for the common council. And so I think it's important for alders to be able to go to committee meetings, as well as to take part in CCEC. So let's figure out how we can make that work. All right. Thank you. Attorney Haas, I did not prepare you to actually speak about this. I don't know our next item, which is 73445 honoring resolutions. You and I talked about this the other day and realized how difficult it is to figure out how to move around honoring resolutions. An email was sent out earlier today, and it's attached to the legislature item. We will look at that together. I just want to make it very clear that they are draft suggestions. I am not coming here tonight and proposing that we do anything in particular. But I think when we started talking about moving the honoring resolutions to an earlier time and some different configurations of that, it became clear that it's hard. I will say the two things that I went into the discussion looking at was the idea of having some sort of small committee before the council meeting where the presentation of an honoring resolution would happen. And then the council would just either confirm or vote down that honoring resolution without debate. Another thing that I asked to look at was the idea of not actually even doing that pre-meeting, but actually taking advantage more of the city's social media website and ability to go to events. And so if we're honoring a particular organization, you know, we can send an alder or, or the mayor or, or multiple people there to actually give that honoring resolution and bring that to the people opposed to using valuable council time. I think what was discovered as part of this is that it is hard not to, not to use up council time if it's going to be in front of the council. So that's a little bit of brief background. I don't know how much I've stepped on anything that I'm putting you on the spot to talk about, Attorney Haas. I know you spoke with a bunch of colleagues about this. Do you want to share any of that discussion and any, any thoughts around that? Knowing that this is not legal, so Attorney Haas is going to throw in some of his opinion. But he did a bunch of work on this.
Well, thank you, President Furman. I, I don't, you know, we've thrown together a draft of a couple of different options. I don't know if that's something you want me to share or just kind of describe the two approaches we've come up with so far.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably a good start. If we shared those two approaches, again, with a caveat that these are not proposals, these are intended to spark discussion.
Okay, let me see if I can do that. Is that working?
No, you just pressed, something, something happened where we just see a small sliver.
This happens all the time.
There we go.
Is that working? Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, yes. So these are not, you know, obviously have not been introduced. I was just trying to draft a couple of different options based on our discussion and conversations I had with other municipal attorneys, just what happens in their communities for honoring resolutions. So the first option here keeps, keeps this in the council's purview. But the objective is try to, you know, try to limit the time it takes to consider and adopt resolutions. Now, the first part of this here is just taking a stab, preliminary stab at what an honor and resolution is. And I think there's some, some feedback I've heard is that, you know, we should try to, or the council should, should try to tie honor and resolutions, make sure that they're tied to the Madison community. And that maybe there's been some that have gotten a little bit far afield, but that's obviously a policy decision. But that's why that language is in there. Doesn't have to be in there if, if the council doesn't want any type of restriction. The next part, subsection B here would be to do away with the tradition of reading the entire resolution and just read the title and, and a brief summary and not reading the entire resolution. And then there, there could still be public comment, but I think the aim of, of subsection, subsection C here is that it would be subject to the same three-minute limit. And for both, you know, honorees, other members of the public, you know, that we, we would limit the public comment. And D is, I guess, an attempt to impose a little bit more of a time limit on council members. And have it a, oops, I have three, two minutes there. I don't remember, recall if we meant it to be three or two minutes.
But I want to be clear for the record, that was your idea, not mine. So I don't know if you had mine.
So you could take your pick if you want to limit it. But also, any of these rules would still be subject to being suspended. And, you know, we had some discussion about, well, can we just not even have the council? You know, could we, we, we talked with the idea of requiring, trying to require that these be on the consent agenda, but I don't think we can really do that. I think, you know, if it's an item to be passed and considered, then members have a right to debate and, and vote on it. So I think this would be one idea. The other option we discussed was just taking this out of the purview of the council and have it, we call, I call that an honor and resolution board, which be, would be made, as proposed here, just the mayor and council leadership. Each of them could designate a representative to serve on the board. The mayor, the mayor's designee would be the chair. And then the board would decide when and how often they would meet, if it was once a month or before council meetings. And this board, the difference would be the board would be, have the authority to act on resolutions. Obviously, council members could attend board meetings, make, you know, introduce or present resolutions. And the board would only act upon resolutions that were introduced by members of the council. Then the board would, would adopt resolutions and simply submit a report to the council about what resolutions were, were adopted. So I, you know, that was just sort of some brainstorming. You know, I'm not personally wanted to either or any approach, but they were meant to be kind of a starting point for discussion.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. I appreciate that. Alder Foster?
Thanks for the, the work on this and the different alternative paths. I feel pretty drawn towards the, the second one, the honoring resolutions board. It seems like there's a, there's a lot of discretion and flexibility built into there with that sort of small team of, you know, assumably trusted people that also, you know, give space for, you know, recordings or sharings in different ways or whatever. I mean, I don't know. It, it feels like it could, it can meet the spirit of what I think is really needed, that we don't lose as part of these. I think everybody understands the value of having the process. But it just seems like it gives a lot of flexibility and most, kind of most effectively keeps it out of the council meetings as well. And I think that board, you know, if they're, if they're a formal board, they could also, I would think, or maybe we could create a way for them to, you know, sort of on rare occasion, and, you know, that they could forward a certain thing, or I don't know, you know, they could highlight something if needed or, or something. Maybe that's opening up Pandora's box. But yeah, I, I think that one seems a lot better to me. The one above, I don't expect would probably change a lot. Or maybe it would, but it just seems like we're going to be in the kind of same fundamental circle, even if everybody only talks once, even if we summarize a little bit instead of reading the full thing. I think when we've got, you know, a lot of people receiving, I think it's still going to be a, a big thing. And I think it's going to be really tough to try and put parameters around the content. And I expect it probably won't be respected. And it's going to be a difficult thing for people to challenge, because nobody really wants to challenge honorary resolutions. So, yeah, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Heck?
Thanks. I, I wondered, I have a question about the honoring resolutions board concept, which I also kind of like. The, the third item, it shall submit a report of its actions to the common council pursuant to 2.27. Does that mean it would show up as an agenda item on, on, for the common council, therefore could be pulled off of consent? Therefore, somebody could say, I want to read it. Therefore, somebody might want to give comment and public comment. I mean, it's because I was, what got me thinking originally was seems reasonable that it could be an agenda item. And the summary could just be read, and that's it. But if it's an agenda item, as Alder Foster was saying, then you're opening up the possibility of a lot of other opportunities. So I, I wasn't sure what, what that report really meant. Is it a report of officers? Or where, where would that? Or would it just be off the agenda?
Attorney Haas, you're muted. Go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
You are. We can hear you. Thank you.
Thanks. I could not get myself back in the screen to unmute. So that's a, that's a good point, actually. I mean, under that 2.27, that was that old, that solitary reports ordinance, and we amended that, the council amended that simply to say that, you know, the council accepts reports, and it would show up on, on the council agenda. Presumably, it would just go on the consent agenda, but you're a correct alder, it could be excluded from the consent agenda. And I guess that would, you know, the benefit of that for the council is it still allows the council some role, I guess, if it wants to. But if, if it, if it does become habitual that it's excluded, then, you know, maybe we've lost, lost some of what we tried to accomplish.
That's my, that's the end of my comment. Harumph.
Hey, Alder. But to be clear, Attorney Haas, we don't need to do that report. That was just a suggestion.
Right, right, right. Exactly. Yeah, it, right, that could be deleted, and it just ends with the board. That's an option as well.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. And thank you, Alder Heck, Alder Bennett.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to understand. So like, would this board potentially be able to deny new honorary, honorary resolutions that alders present? new honor, honorary resolutions that Alders present?
Yes.
It's like, I feel like that would cause rift. Like what if I wanted an honorary resolution hypothetically? And the board denied it. I'm like, well, this sucks. I'm gonna put it in Legastar and present it anyways. Like, could I do that? Or?
Attorney House, would there be other options for Alders if, if this, whoever's on this committee decides to deny something?
Uh, well, I, I think that's, I guess the question is what, you know, what are we going to call an honor and resolution? And how strict does, you know, does a council want to be in saying we're just not going to consider something that is deemed to be an, an honoring resolution? Um, uh, I suppose if an, if an alder introduced something that is clearly an, an honor and resolution, um, yeah, it, I, I was going to say it could be, it could be referred us to we, to the board, but if the board's already acted on it and, and not adopted it. I, you know, the way, the way this draft is through, I think there's nothing to stop an alder from introducing an honor and resolution for the council to consider. So I think if, if, if you want, if the council wants to prevent that, we would probably need to tweak this language a little bit and say they are only to be considered by the, that board and, and not by the council.
And like, if, uh, if the board is able to deny honoring resolutions, I mean, what are the parameters? Obviously you just said one, like if it's clearly an honoring resolution. But what if, I don't, I'm not saying that this council or board would do this. But maybe what if in the future they were like, oh, I just don't agree with this, so I'm not gonna make it an honoring resolution, so I'm gonna deny it. Like, that would be kind of mean.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I mean, it's hard to, a- as I said to Alder Furman, you, you know, you could have theoretically, say you had an alder that wanted to, to honor the people that stormed the Capitol on January sixth. That would, you know, something that clearly would not have the support of the council. Um, i- i- it's just hard to anticipate every type of honor and resolution that might be introduced. I've only been here two years, but I have not seen an honor and resolution introduced that has not been passed ultimately.
Right. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just checking.
Yes, ear low. That's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm.
Thank you, Jill.
I'm in the library. I, I don't know if this thing is like not good. Um, oh, and like I had another thought and I'm stealing another Alder's thought from this. But, um, one thing maybe to explore in the future is like, I know we have the report, but it would be kind of cool if we could put it on the city website and like all the stuff to like actually honor them and actually spread the word about whoever we're honoring or whatever we're honoring. Um, that way it gets more attention than just us twenty Alders.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. I agree. And I agree. We, we, we talked about there. I mean, you know, to be hon, how many people are actually watching our council meetings? That's, you know, another reason why we should be reconsidering this. Um, and so taking advantage of social media and the website is definitely, definitely noted in a good idea. Uh, anything else, Alder, uh, Bennett?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Curry.
Thank you. Um, I share kind of the sentiment that Alder Bennett did. A little nervous about creating of the board. Um, I understand some of the movement to make our meetings efficient, um, you know, not have folks who are registered on other items to be waiting or delayed very long. Um, but just considering the lack of parameters or, uh, guidelines in this, um, it cha, it will change often. And so I would encourage, if that's where we're going to go, that we would add maybe some parameters in there. My personal, um, preference would be for the first option, but also providing some parameters in there, especially about timelines and what, when things would need to be due, kind of like just we have with the agenda, as well as clarifying what the council staff's role would be in. I feel like often folks are like, I want to do an honoring resolution, but don't write it. And so I would encourage parameters for both, but my preference, just due to, I forget if it's subjectivity, objectivity, the bad one of depending on who is part of that board and kind of having the power to dictate what we do and don't pass, um, makes me nervous.
Vice President Curry, I, I appreciate that. I, I'm actually, uh, was thinking, um, I, I struggle with, um, you know, this is something that I've tried to, to think about as we're developing things, struggle giving leadership any more power than they already have. Um, and this is obviously an example that goes against that. I mean, you're, you're now saying leadership now has the ability to, to do something that their colleagues can't. What would you think about making that board just a tiny bit bigger? Uh, maybe including like the past president on it as well, and a one other member or something. Um, I, I was wondering, um, I, I assume Attorney House, um, we can't, we can't set our, committees can't set their own quorum numbers, can they? Um, that's probably dictated by Robert's rules, the, what, what a quorum of a committee is.
Right, well, it is, I mean, the council can always, you know, make an exception to Robert's rules and its ordinances. And, uh, you know, we do have some ordinances I just recently discovered where the, well, maybe it's not an ordinance, but where there's a range of membership. This happens with the committees related to the overture center agreements where the agreement said the body will be between twenty and twenty-five members. There's not a firm number. Um, but yeah, certainly the, the membership of this board could be expanded. I'll just note one idea we did not, I did not really draft that other cities had mentioned is that, you know, their resolutions are, uh, mostly just mayoral proclamations. They don't even have the council involved. And, and so, you know, I wanted to present, uh, you know, some options where at least the council would still have involvement.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that gets lost in these discussions is the ability for the mayor to do mayoral proclamations. And there is an ability for individual Alders to do proclamations. And there's a whole, uh, you know, format for that, that people generally don't take advantage of. Um, but there's nothing, there's nothing that precludes Alders from doing some sort of honoring thing. Um, Vice President Curry, uh, we went, uh, on a little bit of a tangent there, but, um, I do want to ask you, um, uh, would you feel a little bit differently about a committee if, if the membership included some additional people? Um, my, I, I asked some questions because I'm concerned about quorum, um, but just that concept of more people, would that make you feel a little bit better?
No, I think it'd be similar to C C E C. And I mean, it's rare that you get a hundred percent consensus on things that change policy and practice. Um, but clearly nobody really challenges honoring resolutions. And so I would just worry about additional distractions that aren't necessary to act like, I don't want to say the real work, but literally having a meeting. Um, yeah, I think what would make me more comforted, comfortable is honestly, if it wasn't Alders. Um, I also, a concern is finding time to meet. I know it probably wouldn't take very long. Um, but trying to find time on the mayor's calendar is a nightmare on top of what she already has as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. You bring up the idea of, um, distractions from what our business is. And that's exactly what honoring resolutions are, in my opinion. Um, I understand the value of them, but I do think they are, they are a distraction from what the council does. Um, I think one thing maybe to possibly explore, e- explore is if things were denied, that there's an appeal process. But that does not address your, your concern of it being a distraction. Um, that, you know, uh, leadership decides to deny something and all of a sudden it ends up being this big mess that, um, we, we don't typically have.
One more point, sorry, and I'll put my hand down. Um, I agree, but disagree a little bit about, for instance, who attends and watches our council meetings? Like I personally have learned about organizations and different days that aren't on like the U S calendar. Um, so I feel like it's an opportunity to also highlight what's being done in the community that may not be recognized in other spaces or folks may not be aware of it. I just think our process now is also lacking boundary or people calling to order, um, to say we're kind of getting outside of ourselves. So I guess my biggest thing is to stress some parameters, um, around that and keep pounding that in. Um, but yes, abbreviating. I don't think it's necessary to read an entire resolution that's available online and published in the agenda. That's it.
I appreciate that feedback very much, Vice President Curry. Uh, Alder Foster.
Thank you. I, um, wish I had Vice President Curry's optimism about, um, encouraging folks to act right. But, uh, I, I think we got to get them out of that meeting. And, um, I think the way we do it is by having whatever the alternative is actually be good. So have people want to have honoring resolutions go through there, because whoever they're trying to honor are going to feel it. They're going to be, you know, get the thing from the mayor, you know, send a link to their friends and families that can watch or whatever. I mean, I, I think that's what's going to make it or break it. Um, I think we already have an appeals process in place. So I mean, what, you know, honoring resolutions, uh, you know, without trying to define what, when they are, when and when they aren't, um, what they do today is they get you sort of a free pass, you know, you get to be on the front of the agenda. And you, without suspending the rules, um, you know, it gets acted on that, that night. It's not introduced. So if somebody sends something to this board and they denied it, which I honestly think would be a super rare thing, it'd be like an alder pulling their name off as a sponsor, or, you know, probably a few of them, if it's that contentious of a thing, that just rarely really happens. But if it did, then that, um, it could be introduced on, a- as a resolution. I mean, I don't think we can stop it. We could, we could say you can't do something, but then it would be, um, suspension of the rules, which is what you need to, to act on something you're introducing the same night anyway. So if there was something where, uh, you know, a president, vice president just went crazy and denied it. And, you know, a majority of the council or, you know, two thirds of the council would have supported that saying, there is that path. And yeah, it would be drama, but the whole thing is drama. And obviously whatever the topic is, is drama. So like, I guess that, that part doesn't really worry me. Um, and I just, I really don't think it's going to be a big thing. Um, so I, I don't, and maybe Attorney House, if you could just con- confirm kind of my understanding of it, but I, that, that's how I'm thinking of it. So I think there actually is a, is a process in place that maybe answers, um, Alder Bennett and Alder, um, Curry's concern about sort of decision-making or, or having a couple of people take control instead of the council.
Sorry, Attorney House, go ahead, if you.
Uh, no, I, I think that's, I think that's correct. Um, uh, I, I, I'm just, I'm having this discussion with, with Karen. And one idea that she brought up is maybe we just try as a preliminary step, just not reading the resolutions and see how much time that cuts out. And you can do that without passing new ordinance.
We do, we do have a new policy for whatever it's worth, where we're trying, if we don't have somebody to present it to, we're not reading it. And so there have been a bunch where we've kind of moved on, um, but related to the idea of appeals, I mean, um, would we have to write something for that in? Or there's, um, maybe we should be explicit about that if we go that route on, you know, here's how the council could, could appeal, uh, a denied honoring resolution?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we certainly, we, we can. I mean, it seems like a lot of work for something that is not likely to happen, but.
Yep, um, uh, but I appreciate that, Attorney House. Thank you. Uh, and, and thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, uh, Alder Heck.
Thanks. I've, I've kind of been swayed by Alder Curry and Alder Bennett a little bit. And I feel like we're, it's complicated and what, what, what we're trying to do by creating this board. And, um, I mean, I, it would be great, but I do think that the opportunities for divisiveness are increased. Uh, potentially, maybe it would run smoothly for twenty years. I don't know. But I do think, um, there, there are some opportunities for problems. Uh, and so I'm a little bit, uh, I think swayed towards, uh, you know, not reading the resolutions and, and option number one at this point, so that we, we don't create problems. I've taken my name off of sponsoring honoring resolutions because I disagreed with them. But I don't say anything at the meeting. Somebody certainly could. Uh, we've had several that were questionable in my mind. But, uh, I'm, I'm content with just continuing to do that. I'll take my name off if I think it's stupid or inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Uh, Alder Figurale Call. Um, Alder Figurale, you're muted. Um.
I, I'm sorry, Alder. I went the other way. Um, I don't want to, um, move too far away from the intent here, which is to save time on, on, on the floor. Especially now that all the comment, the, the public comment comes in the beginning. To me, there's two things that make the, makes the honoring resolutions, um, take too much time. It's the part of reading them, one, and two, the part of the council members' comments. Yes, sometimes we get occasionally, we have a stream of people calling and commenting. But that is not for most of them. Most of them is us really going at it. Um, so limiting the time that a person can speak for including council and not reading them should be, should be a, an improvement of the process. And definitely, I know this might be a little bit more work, but highlighting what these people, why we are honoring these people and elevating them on the website, on social media, putting links of what their, their work is, having their story out there. To me, that's way more important to it. But, um, I, I mean, I think that it, it still won't be perfect, but limiting time and just reading, reading the, reading it, um, without reading the ta, reading just the, the top line should be, should be an advancement for what we're trying to do here in our position. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Alder Figurale Call. Let me ask you a question though, um, related to that. I mean, you know, we could take the honor, we had an honoring resolution for an outgoing alder where we had an unwritten rule on kind of a handshake agreement among all Alders that we'd only have two people speak to it. And people, you know, objected to that. Nobody in the council was going to do anything to stop that. And so I wonder the idea of putting the limits, you know, do, do you think you're going to vote against a colleague that wants to speak longer? Um, you know, we're, we're not, you know, let's, you know, yes, if everybody behaves, this is okay. But, um, you know, are you, are we going to cut off, you know, my mic because I want to talk an extra minute? Or if, you know, I ask the body for more time, is the body going to vote against that? Probably not, because that, that creates a ton of conflict.
So I, I, maybe I'm mistaken. I have to go back and look at the video, but when we heard the first, our first day in council, I thought that was very specific and clear that there was a limit of people for speaking because we had a full agenda, we had new people coming in, we had this swearing in, we have all these things. And, and that was kind of put out there from the get-go. And if we are this, spending all this time discussing this, and we've been talking about this for a long time, and we're going to bring this to council, I think that is an opportunity for us to really, um, demonstrate that we're serious about it. So to answer your question, if we change this order, if, if we actually are committed to make our time, um, to respect each other's time, I would definitely say I would vote against it. I wouldn't have any problem to vote against it. We, we couldn't, who was voting against, um, referrals before? We, changes were made. Now there's some kind of rules about the referrals. And I have voted against letting people add extra referrals just from the floor. I, I, I would say yes. I will vote, I will say no to it. If we have this, if we have the, the, a refer, a pressure on the, um, expectations and we have the discussion that we have here, I will have no problem saying, nope, sorry Keith.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Alder Figurale Call. Um, Alder Bennett.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, okay, cool. Um, I had to switch my phone for a second. I, yeah, I, I, I just have to. yeah, I I I just have to elevate, go wait, um, to gel, Alder Heck, um, Patrick got, um, Alder Heck got to at the end. There is, I don't know, I don't see the of another board, no offense, and and it just seems like a lot of extra work for the mayor and for the president and for the vice president for something that's like pretty not controversial. I I think it's, I don't know, it just, it just makes a lot more sense to just put the honoring resolutions on the consent agenda. Um, and I think to again, go back to what um Janice said, it's and to to satisfy, I guess, the need or desire to honor someone, make it more public. Um, and and just another point on on the on the boards, I have to agree with Alder Heck. I think it would I think it might, knowing sometimes how council works, it it might just add another layer of resentment, like um, to, I don't know, council leadership, like why do they get to choose what resolutions get to be honored or not? Um, I don't know, I could see it adding another layer of resentment and headache to something that shouldn't cause a headache.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. I do actually just want to clarify, we we can't put the, I mean, the idea is not to put it, we we wouldn't be able to put it on consent agenda and not not talk about it. If somebody wants to talk about an honoring resolution, um, that they'd be able to. So um, you know, it would still take up council time. Um, if we went, so just wanted to make that clear. Um, if we went with that option one, and again, we we can tweak the tweak either option. Um, how do people feel about moving up the time of the start of the council meeting? You know, to to six o'clock instead of six thirty. I mean, you know, the 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 intent of this is is to, I mean, the intent of this, one of the big intents of of looking at these honoring resolutions is the fact that our meetings last too long. Um, you know, it takes a while for people, obviously, to public comment to happen. And, you know, we're staying to twelve, one o'clock, and if we can shave a half hour or forty five minutes off the front of a meeting, um, you know, that that was part of the the talk on one of the places where honoring resolutions could could be one of these areas where we could shave time off. Um, so if we're going to keep them in the meeting and and include limits, I, you know, I I I hear the feedback loud and clear. I think you, once you include limits, limits break and, you know, there, you know, I'm going to be probably be angry at Alder Figueroa Cole for not letting me speak another minute. So there's going to be conflict regardless. Um, but with that idea, I'm curious what people think about moving the time. Um, Alder Foster.
I think it's a great idea. Um, I I also think potentially doing it as a um info session, I mean, something like, like we had talked, or I had mentioned maybe earlier, but like, it could be a half hour earlier and it could be everything that kind of happens today, but it doesn't require quorum, for example. And then the actual voting and accepting it and passing it happens assumedly as part of consent agenda because they've been read, people have gotten to say their pieces, those that want to are are there commenting on it, the elders that want to be. Um, and none of that needs to be at the same time as when we actually formally adopt it. So I would be totally down with that. I mean, in my ideal scenario would be, yeah, six o'clock is the info session, or we can call whatever we want. That's when we go through honoring resolutions, read them, handle them however we want. And then um, it is on the consent agenda for formal adoption as part of the consent agenda. And yes, somebody could pull it off and do it again, but assumingly, if the people that are accepting and everything else is happening at six o'clock or between six and six thirty, um, I think that could work really well.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, Alder Bennett.
Could you present the three options again?
So so to be clear, so I I could certainly have Attorney Haas um pull that back up on the screen. I think the thought the thought was um, they're not necessarily options as much as discussion items to to spark discussion. I'm happy to pull that up if if it's helpful, or it's also attached to Legis使, if it's helpful for you to see that again. Um, but there there is no right answer necessarily. There there are certainly some some issues with going in particular directions, i.e., you know, we can't do no debate, you know, we can't just put it on consent, for example. Um, so there are certainly some caveats there, but um, what what would be helpful for you, Alder Bennett?
I I guess I thought it was options not, but um, I think that council should be moved up to six PM anyways. This, and I and I completely agree with your point. I'm not going to lie, like, I have a slight advantage against honoring resolutions. Not the 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 content, but just how, like, the the fact that it's low key, it's it's low impact. Um, and it's and it's like, oh, my gosh, like, let's get through these. Come on, we have a big ticket item and we're spending like an hour talking about honoring resolutions every single meeting. So um, I don't know, maybe if we just, like, all their, or no, 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 not all their. Attorney Haas said about just not reading the text or whatever, whatever um, we can do. I hope it, we could get it on the consent agenda if you would be like, if they want to take it off, they can, but I don't know. I I don't think the honoring resolution should be a highlight of our council meetings, especially in the beginning.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Um, Alder Figueroa Cole.
Maybe we could put them at the end and we will like take less time.
Um, so I appreciate you bringing that up. That was actually one of the suggestions that Attorney Haas heard from his colleagues was putting it at the end of the meeting. Um, which which is an interesting thing to think about and certainly an option. Um, I I think that's a little mean, um, or could be mean, um, especially to ask an organization to wait, um, you know, an entire meeting, but it would certainly make people think um hard about how much time they wanted to spend on something like that. Um, but yes, moving into the end of the meeting is certainly an option. Um, thank you, Alder Bennett. Uh, Alder Figueroa Cole.
Yeah, I remember bringing that up. I'm I'm my head being shoe up and down. So whatever. So, okay, so let's say we agree to move it to six because of the honoring resolutions and not everybody needs to be there and Attorney Haas will have to to jump into that. Um, when we don't have them, because it does seem like we have them all the time, but there are times that we don't have them. Do we just put the, we 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 just start the session at six o'clock with a screen that says council starts at six thirty, six thirty, or what happens when we don't have resolutions? Or when the resolution ends at six fifteen and then we have fifty more minutes to wait for council, you know?
I appreciate you bringing that up because I thought was going through my head. Um, we used to do that with public hearings. Um, public hearings would start at six forty five and there were times that we would actually, you know, be done with whatever we needed to do uh, before six four forty five, and there are times we would wait to six forty five, and there are some times that we suspended. Um, so there there possibly is an ability there to to say, yes, you know, yeah, and Attorney Haas and I, you know, I could work or talk to him more about this and explore. I think the quorum thing is an interesting question, and that's why we were talking about doing that other committee. Um, but there is an ability to say the council meeting starts at six, but but, you know, no business other than the honoring resolution takes place before six thirty. And then, you know, obviously, it would kind of stink to sit there for 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 ten, twenty minutes um and not use that time. But, you know, hopefully that would, that adding that extra half hour might give us more, you know, not not end the meeting as late. Um, so some something to think about. Appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, Alder Heck.
Thanks. I I like this six o'clock idea, but I would say council always starts at six thirty. And if alders or the public drone on too long in the honoring resolutions sessions, then they just get referred to the next six o'clock meeting and it's their fault.
A hard stop is one of them. Thank you, Alder Heck. Thank you, Alder Figueroa Cole. Vice President Curry.
I just thought, does this include, like, I know sometimes we'll have our poet laureates give a poem. Is that included in here, Attorney Haas? Okay, so this, oh, go ahead.
No, I, no, I think that's something different from honoring resolutions.
Okay, it may have to be a conversation with the mayor. I very much enjoy spoken word, but I would say that's not necessary. Um, just due to the amount of events in the community where you can go and hear slam poetry or spoken word or whatever. Um, yeah, I don't know if it would be productive to to ask um Attorney Haas to come back or rework the draft with a little bit more concreteness, or we just don't move forward on it.
Well, that, so Vice President Curry, there's a ton of feedback tonight where I think there there's probably another stab that we could take at this um, and see if we can come to some sort of consensus to move forward. Um, uh, so, you know, I I think this this should be a topic because for me, this is, you know, I I still think this is an important part of our meeting length issues. Um, the the poetry stuff, I'm not sure I personally want to touch that 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 rail. Um, so if that's something you want to work with, work on, I'm certainly happy to give you some advice um on how to go, you know, to to figure out how to structure that. Um, I I don't know enough of the history on why we introduced it, but I'm pretty sure that, you know, that was, you know, it's obviously there's there's a lot of history behind that, I would assume. Um, but it sounds like that's not included necessarily in this particular discussion, but but could be discussed. Uh, uh, Alder Figueroa Cole.
And as part of these discussion or whatever you guys are going to do after this, um, could we have, is it possible to include on our changes to have these these um resolutions be labeled as honoring resolutions? Like when you go to Legis使, that you have all these different labels that have like, I don't know, I don't even remember right, ordinance versus versus um resolution versus miscellaneous versus whatever. Can there be a classification that um that they are honoring resolutions?
We, we will check with IT and see if something like that is possible.
Thank you. Or can we use the miscellaneous that exists in there? I don't know, something, but something to separate them from the actual resolutions would be great.
Appreciate that feedback. All right, um, any other thoughts on this? I I definitely will bring this back um based on feedback um and see if there's um, you know, a a better, you know, a more can, uh, you know, uh, a a way to reflect some of the feedback on option one. And um, I may still take another stab at option two, the separate committee, and see if there are other ways of thinking about it that might get consensus. Um, but probably won't. Um, but I but I I still will take a a shot at at least a discussion for a few minutes here. Uh, Vice President Curry.
Sorry, I'm riddled with questions and I might have just forgot what I was going to ask. Um. Oh, since we are an advisory committee or body, um, let's say we do pass a change. Does that go to the council or is it like signed, sealed, delivered?
Uh, yeah, no. So to be clear, I mean, the the point of this is just discussion. Um, so uh, we will have another discussion, um, at least another discussion, possibly more, and then an item would get introduced to the council. It would get referred here again, and, you know, people can come and have longer discussions about it here, and then the council ultimately would have to approve it. Um, so right now, you know, this is, nothing's introduced, um, nothing's binding what we do, and nothing's binding Curried with what we do on this. Um, we would certainly just be making a recommendation to the council at some point that would have to pass whatever, whatever we suggest um or or not. Thank you, Vice President Curry. Um, okay, um, so uh, I'm going to move on to the next item, if that's all right, um, which is an updating on an update on the alder onboarding and ongoing training. Um, I threw together just a very basic PowerPoint that I'll I'll throw up just to give people an update on the work that Alder Figueroa Cole and I have done, and I'd like to um get some feedback just on 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 what we have uh started to put in place and some of the things that are coming together. Um, uh, uh, and so we can continue our effort. So I'm going to share my screen. Let me open up the PowerPoint. Okay, um, I just want to make it ma- make sure is the, do you do you guys all see the full slide? Great. All right. So this is just a brief update on um uh, the orientation work that um Alder Figueroa Cole and I have started to put together for discussion here. Um, we've done um several interviews, um, not not a ton, um, but things are kind of coming together, and so I thought it was a good idea to bring it back here. Um, just to to get some thoughts on on how things are coming together. Um, we discussed with uh several department heads on uh, how how some departments have some unique things just related to their departments, but then suggestions on how to improve, um, make improvements from twenty uh twenty one. Um, there was definitely, um, you know, a lot of appreciation that, you know, council orientation has gotten better. Um, but there was, you know, a a view that, you know, we obviously we can continue to make this better, and obviously I've heard that from CCC members. Um, the goal is for us to, you know, conduct additional interviews and use the feedback from this evening to determine next steps for those interviews. Um, I I said some of this already, but, you know, we want to restore the mentor program, so I think we need to have longer discussions here on what that actually means. Um, but but definitely a good idea to have that, um, universal recognition that orientation has improved, um, but too much information upfront. And that's just absolutely overwhelming to new alders, um, understandably so. Um, a a goal of doing short and easy to update videos um with a scheduled Q and A. Um, so the idea is, you know, people can can learn at their own time and then get together and ask questions about what they learned opposed to doing it all in one sitting. Suggestion that we start in January, which we've talked about. Um, I think one of the things that came out of this is really the under, the understanding that there is a policy, there's policy things that alders need to understand. Um, and then there's also the day to day. And so, you know, one one person had talked to us about how um previous orientation was very focused on affordable housing, um, but didn't didn't focus enough on um the interaction with that particular department that the alder would have to do on day one. Um, you know, they they, you know, alders obviously run and they want to accomplish things. Um, and so it's important for them to know how to accomplish things, but it's also important for them to know how to do the job. And um it it sounded like, you know, really uh making sure that we're focusing more on the day to day. Um, so alders don't feel like they're overwhelmed and drowning by the day to day, um, be a little bit more intentional about that. Um, and then some departments, um, you know, might benefit actually from one-on-one alder orientations. Um, so, you know, I know, remember when I had started, I sat down with planning and they, you know, went went over unique zoning um uh stuff in my district and 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 made sure I uh understood that as much as I could in that uh early, short period of time, um, building inspection, um, there there are unique things that go on in districts that building inspection is definitely able to educate alders about and and set them up better. Um, I don't think every every department um might be ready for for, might need that one-on-one, and obviously, that's pretty time consuming. Um, but I am at some point interested, um, I'm going to go through these other slides very quickly. I'm interested in some thoughts on that. So if you could start thinking about that on 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 suggestions on departments that that all that alders here at CCC think might um benefit from uh one-on-one orientations, uh in addition to the videos, et cetera. Um, one of the things that sort of came out of our discussion is this idea of a a template um for the departments to work with. Um, and 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 create short and easy to update videos on that template. And so, you know, looking at kind of an orientation, um, having a department talk about current uh issues and major projects, um, having a a department talk briefly about their capital and operating budget, um, focusing on alder interactions, um, so topics that you would go to that department for, so you could better understand. Um, frequently asked questions. I mean, these departments know pretty pretty well what alders are going to come to them for, and so if they can answer some of that in advance and have that somewhere, that's that's helpful. Um, we saw that there's value probably in people understanding how departments work together. Um, value obviously in understanding staff assignments and key personnel, and then commonly use acronyms. I heard so many new alders say to me, what does that mean again? Um, we we use way too many, um, like any other big organization as a city, and it would be good for departments to let people know that in an easy way. Wanted to give a quick example of how this template could actually be applied to a particular department. Um, and so the water utility is is somebody that we had spoken to. Um, uh, and, you know, the idea would be, you know, one of the things they had suggested is they wanted people to see their facilities. Um, they have, you know, an ops center, a customer service center. Um, they have well sites, and so we suggested maybe you do, you know, a a a short video of that because trying to schedule alders for tours would be hard. And so I put that kind of the idea of like a next level is maybe you are on the water utility board, or that's something that is important to your district, so you would schedule a tour, an actual tour. Um, but at the very least, you know, seeing seeing a well on video um, may help you better understand what goes on there and seeing the operations center, et cetera. Um, current issues of water utility would talk about are major product, projects are water quality, emerging funding opportunities, uh major projects related to wells, um, water conservation, um, obviously some brief budget capital operating stuff, older interactions, um, interdepartmental, uh, interdepartmental talking, you know, water utility and engineering work a lot together, and I think it's important for alders to understand what that that means and and, you know, um, what that interactions are. Um, so just wanted to show a quick template example. There, these are links for later on, but there are some guides that we can, that um um have been shared with us on what some other cities have done that we can learn from. Uh, interesting that this happened uh fairly recently, uh, but also another thing for people to to think about is I've had several organizations offer to help provide training for onboarding and briefings. Um, uh, we are obviously as a, you know, C C E C going to talk more about um trainings like we're doing with the trainings like we're doing with the, um, active shooter response training and de-escalation. Um, but there are other leadership things that possibly could, we could have assistance from organizations based on, on some outreach that I've heard. Um, the chamber, for example, um, talked about, you know, does it make sense for them to do a short presentation on the, the economy in Madison and obviously not be too political about that? Um, but what are some opportunities like that? Um, you know, I see Alder Bennett's hands up and I'll call, call on her in a moment because I'm almost done. Um, but even having UW come in and talk a little about, you know, how they interact with the city, um, that might be helpful because, um, you know, we, we all in some way or another deal with UW at some point. Um, that is actually my, my slide. So I'm going to stop my screen and let, uh, and call on Alder Bennett. But I'm interested in people's feedback and I'm certainly happy to open up, um, a slide for discussion. So Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Um, first off, agree with the UW suggestion because sometimes we'd be out of touch with what UW is doing. Um, I also really like the idea of, um, interactive, like going to water utility and stuff like that. Like I, um, during the Alder training and honestly, I just went through another training for my new job. The sit and just listen thing is so boring and can you still hear me? Wait, shoot.
We, we can, Alder Bennett, we can hear you.
This is so weird. I don't know what happened. Anyways, um, it can get really monotonous and I will admit that I kind of zoned out, right? Some of the training. So if we could break it up a bit, and I, I wanted to, oh, and then also, I wanted to also suggest, I know I talk, told, talked to you about this, Keith, but like, and for the Alder mentors, we have a really strong network of not only current Alders, but, um, former Alders that I think may be interested in help, helping mentor new Alders, just because sometimes there can be this thing where you feel as though other, your other Alder mentors might be lobbying you. Um, so taking it from a former mentor that doesn't really have that stake um, in council might be helpful, um, to add to that. So, oh, and I, I wanted to ask, um, have you, have, have y'all considered, um, it moving some trainings up to before, um, before like people are elected or?
Yeah, so I'll start. So yeah, January, so that was one of the things on, on the slide was a question mark about the idea of starting in January. Um, uh, that one of the things that's obviously very clear from, and, and is everybody learns differently. And so I appreciate you sharing that, you know, those, I, I don't, I think most people probably don't learn well from sitting through four-hour sessions every night for two weeks. Um, but the idea is how do you break that up and how do you, how do you present that in a way that's consistent? Not everybody's going to have time to go tour a facility. Um, not everybody's going to, you know, have time to, you know, uh, go and sit down and, um, you know, be more interactive. And so working out schedules is hard, um, but I do think there's opportunity for further training. Um, I do want to address the mentor thing. Absolutely. Um, former Alders, um, uh, should be part of that. Um, it was one of the things that, that I had in the kind of the back of my mind was, um, and we could certainly get in more, more of this tonight if people wish. Um, as we're thinking about the, uh, mentor program is that my thought would be to present Alders with a bunch of options. Here, here, and, and that could include former Alders. And here are the things that, you know, these, like we just did with our, our two new Alders. Um, here are the, the topics, uh, that these Alders are passionate about. And so one of the easiest Alders that, um, most people pick on is Alder Heck with his planning knowledge. And so telling somebody, if planning is really a big deal to you and Alder Heck volunteered to be a mentor, you may want to pick him because that's, that's your wheelhouse. Um, uh, that, an easy example. Um, but yes, I think, you know, um, mentors absolutely, if they're doing it right, are lobbying whoever they're, they're mentor, whoever they're mentoring. Um, and, and some people are, might be more comfortable with somebody that isn't an Alder anymore. Um, they'll still probably get lobbied though by that former Alder. Um, but I do think giving people different options is a good idea. So appreciate that feedback.
Thank you. I also have a suggestion, um, to add district tours to the orientation. Um, it might not have, happen right away because people might be still getting up committed to their job. But, um, I think that's something that should be included i- in the first few months. Um, and I was kind of wondering what your thoughts are about providing a more district oriented, like, um, training. For, and what I mean is when I came in, I, um, my predecessor provided me with like a little like memo of what it, what you do as a district eight Alder. Um, and that was somewhat helpful coming in, but still there was a lot I needed to catch up on, like going, and it's, it might be intimidating for initial Alders to know what they need to do, like go in, talk to you in central and the fire department and all this other stuff. And I'm wondering if there's a kind of handbook or like framework we can make for new Alders, like when you're starting off in your first month, maybe try to talk to this and this is specifically to certain districts or even just certain areas like central, west side, east side, that type of thing. Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, I think it's obviously very hard to execute on. I mean, you know, uh, we certainly can't force an Alder to provide that on their way out. And, um, you know, I think there, but there's certainly value. And I think, I think there are ways to make that generic though. Um, I think there are ways to say, you know, check with these neighborhood associ- check with your neighborhood associations. Here's where you find a list of that. Now here are the districts that represent. So I think there are ways to figure that out. Um, but I appreciate that fe- feedback and certainly I'm taking notes. So thank you.
Yeah. And one more suggestion during, um, specifically the district eight district tour, I think we all need to go on a boat ride because I represent the lake. So, um, we need to talk to my duck constituents.
I, so I appreciate you bringing on the tours. I know, I know previous leadership tried to do that. I think, um, I don't know if that was, I, that was probably two thousand nineteen that, that was attempted. And it was an, it was, it never, it never got off the ground because, um, you know, required, but finding a bus, finding a time that worked for enough Alders. Um, you know, I, I love the concept because I think there is so much parts of the city that we don't know because they're not our districts and it's, you know, we're focused on our, our world and, uh, you know, Alder Foster texted me the, you know, sent me a note the other day and said, you know, come check out a particular sidewalk thing in his district. And I, I think you learn a lot from the, these things, but I think finding, finding that time, um, to do groups is incredibly difficult. And so I certainly don't want to set something up that, that just isn't going to happen, but, but appreciate the suggestion. Um, and, and, you know, see, see if maybe something like that could happen. Uh, Alder Heck?
Thanks. Just a couple of random thoughts. Uh, the water utility example was great, but I feel like it was already too much information almost. And, uh, if, if they're going to talk in detail about capital needs and things like this, it's like, whoa, I, I, I feel like it needs to be even simpler than that. That was a lot of technical, um, uh, you know, information about their, their needs and, and their pro- project programs that I feel like could be pretty overwhelming for some, but that's, that's, uh, just an aside, uh, but, but really, um, I guess two points, uh, you know, I, I'm, I've been an Alder for three plus years. I still have to stop and think about, uh, on particular things that I get constituent contacts about. Uh, is it engineering? Is it traffic engineering or is it streets? I mean, those, and, and I, I do know the difference, but I still sometimes I'm not really sure which of those three entities does something I'm interested in. So, uh, um, I think, uh, and I, and I know in orientation in twenty nineteen, they tried to explain that, but again, it was overwhelming and and I, I'm thinking about the day-to-day aspect of this, about orientation and how we can, uh, at least have a resource for new Alders that, uh, and it, it doesn't have to be their mentor for simple things like who handles streetlights? It sure seems like engineering maybe, but I mean, I'm assuming that when the council office is uh, fully staffed, that it, the potential exists for the council office to be a resource for those sorts of questions for, for new Alders. Who do I talk to about this strange thing? Um, and, and that way, uh, it doesn't all fall on a mentor and you don't have to email the department head because you don't know anybody in the department except for the department head. Uh, there, uh, initially I was thinking, well, maybe each department should have a contact person that, that Alders can comfortably ask questions of, you know, who should I talk to about this? And the answer might be wrong department. Uh, you know, and, and feel comfortable with that. It, it, or it could come through the, the council office maybe. So some sort of uh, resource list that's relatively simple.
Alder Heck, who does, who does handle streetlights?
That's traffic engineering.
Thank you. Um, so we definitely, one of the department heads we talked to definitely suggested that the council office, um, you know, be, be, be a resource for that and pointed out that Karen has a ton of that knowledge. Obviously Debbie has a ton of that knowledge. Um, and so I, you know, I think some of the more trickier things, um, I, I still to this day go to Debbie and say, hey, you know, who am I contacting for this? And obviously Debbie is, is helpful and knows that, but I do think there's an ability in these orientations to have some of those questions already, you know, written out. Um, my, my fear is whenever we ask the council, if we ask the council office to have some sort of resource guide, how do you keep that up to date and how? But these departments, you know, if I go to the streets department right now and say, what are the frequent questions you get from Alders? We can prob-, you know, they, they could probably give that to us pretty quickly. Um, the other thing I would just note about the water utility thing, if there were short videos, it sounds like you'd probably skip the major project videos, um, or maybe the funding thing, but you might actually probably want to watch the video about the FAQs. Um, and so I think giving, not making, subjecting Alders to having to watch two hours from the water utility or two hours from planning because it's so much to take in. And then also giving Alders the ability to do it at their own term, uh, on their own terms. Because I think so much of this job is you don't know what you don't know until, till it comes up. And so all of a sudden you're like, wait, I, I never thought about this. Where, where can I find out about this? You know, um, it happens every year with the budget. All of a sudden people are like, wait, you know, we, I only, I've only done one budget. What does this mean again? And so I think having that stuff a little bit more, um, easy to go back to and watch. And so an example the other day was, um, amendments. Um, you know, if I quiz some of the, you know, are, are now going into the second year Alders, um, do they remember how to do budget amendments? Well, what's an easy way to go look that up? There, there is no easy way. Luckily finance just talked about that at our last meeting. Um, but having those things easily accessible, because if you're telling me on April, you know, eighteenth, how to do budget amendments, um, I'm not going to remember that because between April and September, there's so many different things that happen. And so I think, you know, having a good place to be able to find these different resources and videos is the goal of this orientation put together.
And just, just one final thought on the, uh, you know, finding out who you should talk to about particular issues. I mean, I think it, just like people have different learning styles, I think that some Alders will, are hesitant to ask for help about certain things. They have to admit their stupidity when they do that. Uh, and so there, there needs to be a, a comfortable resource for them and about directing them to the, to the right person, the right staff member. That's it. Thanks.
Appreciate that, Alder Heck. Thank you. Uh, Alder Foster.
Uh, thank you. And, um, maybe my comments will support some of what Alder Heck was saying. Um, I just from like my experience, uh, teaching adult education and what even what folks have said today, I would really encourage us to embrace, um, pretty aggressively the, um, like project-based learning or basically when you need to know something is the best time you're going to learn about it. Um, and you know, you've got whatever, yeah, if you've got a water utility thing, if you're a PFAS Alder, you're going to want to talk with somebody most likely that knows about it, where you can just ask all the questions. And if they have resources that are pre-recorded or summary stuff or whatever, great, you know, they could, they could be available to, to review ahead of time. But ultimately I think sitting down with someone, um, you know, and starting with an agency head and, and having agency heads know that it will be normal for Alders to come with questions and get sort of a, a personalized orientation, you know, tailored to whatever big topic is happening. I mean, I, I think a lot of that already happens and I would just be in favor of like saying that's, that's how we expect it is going to happen. And we're not expecting any Alder to go through methodically. And by not a month in or two months in, or even six months in, to have sort of reviewed, done like overviews for every agency, because it's just, m- most folks are not going to absorb it. Um, and so that might, that might be part of an answer to what Alder Heck was saying is like, yeah, you don't feel stupid because we're not expecting that you know anything about TIF until you have something to talk about TIF. And, you know, there are limitations to it, you know, people aren't going to be fully, uh, you know, educated when um, important decisions are in front of us. So they're, you know, but that's how it is today as well. So I, I just think in general embracing and really saying, you know what, we're only gonna, our core content for new Alders is going to be very limited. And maybe not even trying at all to do any kind of an o- agency-wide, you know, city-wide overview. Um, and, and, uh, you know, getting support from city staff, because I, I assume that most agency heads already are there. Um, but just getting confirmation, yeah, absolutely. If an Alder calls me with a, a parks question, I'm happy to talk with them or I'll find the person that they can talk to. I mean, that's, that's been my experience. Um, so as long as Alders feel comfortable with that and are encouraged to do that. Um, and then also with council staff support and mentor support, I think between this, those three things, um, you know, you just really keep encouraging, you know, these are Alders, you got to step up, you got to, you got to ask questions, you got to put the, the timeout. So that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess, um, I appreciate that. I'm, Alder Foster, I'm wondering though, how, how you handle the fact of having staff do the same thing over and over again? I mean, I had an Alder talk to me about a particular topic the other day and I, I, they, they said they were going to reach out to staff and I said, no, watch the committee meeting. We went over this. It was really good. Um, and I think they were probably inclined to just go ask staff to tell them about it when there was a, you know, a great video. There was great, great product already. I certainly don't want staff to do something twenty times.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, at least initially, put that in the hands of the agencies. So, I mean, they can, they already have a, a orientation presentation, right? And handouts and all this stuff that they're theoretically reviewing and updating every year. Whatever energy they want to put in there, however they want to break apart their nuggets. I mean, yeah, something like DCPED like is so, you know, where do you even draw the lines? Is it at the division levels? Is it by topic? Are we, what, what about affordable housing? You know? I think they already do and could be encouraged to sort of standardize any of those modules. And then that could be a, oh yeah, I will, you know, be happy to sit down with you. Here's a summary. We've pulled these a five-minute video that really walks you through the, the basics of it. Why don't you watch this first and then let me know what questions you have. So, and you know, we could, we could work towards more encouragement of that and maybe even standardizing some of that. But I think at this point, just setting that expectation that, um, and, and ultimately it's, like I said, it's almost assuredly going to be connected to, to a specific thing. And there is going to be probably specific staff involved in that specific thing that would probably prefer to be able to talk with the Alder and make sure that they've got all their questions answered and not come on a five-minute generalized video overview topic kind of thing. So, yeah, I, I, I'm, I, I would be curious if agency heads were concerned about that, that they're just going to be having a revolving door of twenty Alders doing the same spiel. And, and if there is anything like that, well, then maybe that's part of the core content. But I, I think that would be more the exception than the rule, maybe.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Appreciate that. Uh, Alder Figaro Cole.
Um, so, some of these questions are things that, that I also have concerns with and that, that's kind of the reason why I wanted to be part of this process. Cause I am, in order for me to figure out who to go to, like Patrick is saying, I had to actually keep a list on an Excel spreadsheet, on a Google sheet of who I talked to once I found that person. Cause I mean, I had to build my own list of contacts and what the pro- the issues were. So I, I feel like we should have, that should have been provided to me. And it doesn't have to be by name, but at least I should be able to say this agency deals with this items. Yes, that, that we still have to find a person's name and they change over time, that, that's a different story, but we, we should have some kind of of, uh, more clear process on that. I mean, I built my list as the, as the training was happening and that was pretty much all I got from that training, who, who to talk to and, um, and really no much more because it was, it was exhausting. You're coming out of this campaign that you're exhausted from and now you have to jump into this thing and then you have to cancel. If I will, if I could have had it my way at the time, um, one of the things that came up during these conversations is that some of the training is targeted to the issues that, that they, they top, the hot topics that are happening at the moment. So they're targeted to what people think is the new, what the new Alders are going to be, you know, maybe their campaign promises or something like, like affordable housing is an example. So instead of doing that, which I appreciated, but instead of doing that, I would have had more appreciation for a training that prepared me to deal with the first agent, with the first meeting, with the agenda items on that meeting. Like if there were hot topics on that agenda, what that looked like, wh- what agencies were involved. You know what I mean? Like just get me going. And then in respect to the example of the water utility. And then in respect to the example of the water utility that seems so overwhelming, the idea, the idea it would be not to have all of that in one setting, but just have, just give us an introduction on how things work when we first start, just that. I don't, I don't want to know about the nitty gritty of all the details, like how are, how do things work? And then maybe a scatter the the training to four weeks, six weeks, whatever ahead to actually get into issues that are more, that are needed in more detail. And for the agencies, like if Matt Toker wants to continue to do his one on one, like, um, like, um, Grant is is staying there, that's fine, but he can also schedule a a training for all others, others to show up, whoever wants to show up and and do it at a later time. But I think those first two weeks is such a little retention time for anybody. And definitely I I do agree with with all of you that we need different tools for different type of learning. So, um, so I know Keith put a lot of work on that presentation. Thank you very much. But I just want also so you guys to know that that there's a lot of layers that we're looking into for the for the final product. We're trying to put some package together of multiple tools that people can use.
Thank you, Alder Figurall Cole. I did not spend that much time on that presentation. And it's very much intended to be a work in progress.
Hmm, it's pretty good.
Uh, Vice President Curry. Uh, you're muted.
Thank you, um, for all for your work and kind of comment suggestions. I learned yesterday that I am a dominance communicator. Um, so I'm starting to think about action steps and I know it's very easy to make suggestions. Um, but I'm wondering if we could maybe move into capacity and what folks have, um, coming fresh off a conversation with Liz. Um, I forget her title, but our newest council office staff member, um, processes and documenting of those is like excites her. She really likes that type of work. Um, going back to Alder Bennett's comments, we know it's politics. And so unfortunately, there are some tensions because of folks not getting reelected or whatever happens. And there are Alders who have no engagement or communication outside of what's required with their predecessor. Um, and I know it's hard to get everybody to do something, but how do we retain the historical knowledge that Debbie has, for instance, when Debbie is gone? And maybe starting to document some of those things? Um, yes, staff change over a lot, but I'm starting to think like standard operating procedures. Um, watching a video for me like doesn't hammer it in. I'm a visual person, but looking at a checklist or even making suggestions like Alder Bennett made of, make sure you go see Picnic Point or, you know, something. I have a landfill in mind. Um, all Alders probably aren't going to do that, but if we could be intentional about maybe documenting that and sharing as an example. I have little faith that all 20 of us could have something by April. Um, but even an example to build off of that, even if, uh, counsel staff created that in lieu of, um, not having that for another Alder, if that makes sense. So yeah.
Vice President Curry, that makes a lot of sense. I think one of the things that I I think is important as part of this process is institutionalizing as much of this as possible. Um, because we can't rely on either leadership or or Alders to to do thing XYZ. Um, and so, uh, you know, for example, you know, there were certain things, you know, like the mentor program. That shouldn't have been, in my opinion, this is, uh, it shouldn't have been a decision by leadership. That should, that should have just happened. Staff should have known that, you know, there's some process to go through for mentoring. Leadership, you know, whoever the leadership is, either incoming or outgoing, because it's also a weird period, shouldn't decide like here are the departments that are going to actually present information or here are the Alders that are going to present information. And we definitely need to make sure that the council office has the capacity it needs and has, you know, the the, um, the ability to 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 pass knowledge along and not worry about political fights or, um, you know, political posturing, et cetera. Um, and that's certainly going to be the goal of this is trying to give, you know, Karen and the team, um, you know, as much guidance as this group can and and then turn it over to, you know, Karen and her team um, uh, to to keep up to date and and work with. And so, um, I do, I do appreciate the checklist thing. I think one of the things that that probably, uh, uh, indicates to me is that we should be having departments prepare things in multiple ways if that's what we're going to do. You know, so understanding that, you know, these are guides that are going to be incredibly useful, especially if we keep turning over Alders at the rate that we will. You know, so maybe you ask them, you know, put together, put together this in a video form because some people do want to hear you talk about it, go into detail, but other people just want to see a checklist. So could you also have it like that? Something worth worth thinking about. Uh, go ahead, Vice President Curry.
I just wanted to add one more thought. I guess the checklist was less, city staff have been wonderful. Um, really awesome and responsive and like it baffles me how often people respond depending on the times of the day. But I was thinking more so a checklist for, I'm a starting Alder. Um, instead of waiting for business or issues to come to me, like, for instance, when redistricting occurred and I inherited, um, neighborhoods that Alder Limer had, she literally created a Google Doc for me about these are the neighborhood associations that are most engaged or these are their meeting times. And I was thinking more so a checklist for in districts, especially if you don't have that connection with the Alder that's leaving. Like what are some, it's not like, oh, my gosh, we have to check it all off and now you're an Alder, but gives you an idea of where to start. Um, and maybe like groups and coalitions that are well established that could also help as part of that onboarding or acclamation to now moving from being a resident in this district to like the Alder of the district.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Vice President Curry. Uh, Alder Figurall Cole.
Um, that's it. That that redistricting thing is a good point. I mean, I I actually took the opportunity to document that amazing experience we had with the redistricting. And then I sent it to plan commission like, guys, I mean, can we please have some processes in place for the next one? Because it seemed like it was a little bit, you know, all over the map. And, um, and I should go back and and check in with them. But the point of swi- switching, you know, moving, gaining more, more, um, areas in your district, that was a huge pain point for some of us. Like, like, um, um, Giles just mentioned, like, I actually covered for District 11 until until, um, Arvin, I was ready, but then I actually had to go and figure out who were the contacts for the other people that was added to me. So I had to go and do that on my own and and it's already August and I'm still, I I will say finally, I feel like like those areas are my district, but it took a lo- a lot of work to be able to reset and and figure out who your contacts were. So perhaps in those kind of scenarios that is 10 years, you know, every 10 years, maybe the council or so office has more control on having those SOPs for, you know, to present the changes in collaboration with planning that is creating the committee. Like, I think it should be even part of the committee. How do you make that that transition and you won't depend on on your, you know, colleagues to to get you connected?
Appreciate that. Yeah, you know, I think, I think, I think part of the advantage you had in redistricting and and Alder and Vice President Curry had district, redistricting, and you both knew what you didn't know. And so luckily, you know, it sounds like Vice President Curry got a good guide on that. But like, you know, new Alders are not going to know what they don't know as far as like, you know, here are the key things. So I I I am fearful of relying on former Alders providing any sort of information to anybody. Um, I'm grateful to hear that that other Alders have done that in the past. Um, but, you know, between, you know, the group that we had, you know, the groups that come through here, it's not always going to be the case. But at least letting Alders know, here are the things that you should try to figure out, um, is would be incredibly helpful. Um, at least as a start. Uh, Alder Bennett, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had to elevate, um, especially what Jay Alson or other Vice President Curry, um, don't know if you want me to call you by your official titles, whatever. But, um, yeah, I I mean, I feel like it's something maybe I might just work on in my off time and present it to CCC. Or or like if we can do that, just like a template of what you have of of like major issues you've worked on as Alders and it could be a living document for current Alders. Um, in order to maintain that knowledge. Uh, I mean, I was like the redistricting thing, I was lucky enough to connect with the DA Alder that worked on redistricting 10 years ago, but I don't think all other Alders have that. Um, but and 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 just as an example, I recently learned that a a different predecessor of mine um, had done data regarding, um, affordable student housing and I had no idea. And I'm like, that's a big resource that I could use right now. Um, so I, what I'm saying is that it would be kind of cool if we had a template for each district that kind of had, this is some of the major things, issue, major things in your district. And here are some of the things previous Alders in your district had worked on. That way you can connect to them. Or or I'm saying like, we can start it now and that goes for forward and lives on beyond us. Maybe I could connect with you outside of this meeting to explain.
No, I I mean, I understand what you're saying, Alder Bennett. I just, I'm I'm not convinced that scales. I mean, I'm just so that's, but I hear you. I hear you.
Some Alders might do it and if they, other Alders might be like, I don't care.
This goes back to the fundamental issues we have with our structure is every Alder is different. And it's not, it's, it's, there's good and bad about this, but every Alder is different. Every Alder has a different amount of time they could put into this, um, et cetera. So, but essentially, I think, I think there are ways to generalize that, that that probably could be helpful.
I just take pleasure in giving us more homework. I know, like, you know, some of you, Patrick Grant, might go ham on it, um, with all of your knowledge. Transportation, come on.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll sign up for that. Um, I liked what Alder Curry was saying about the the like personal checklist. Um, and I it act, to me, it also does fit with the, what I said before about sort of learning best when there's actual like reasons to learn about it. But I I like also the idea of not just being reactive with it. Um, and so I can imagine even like a passport kind of thing that, you know, is, uh, here are the different sort of, you know, normal sort of content areas and actually go through that with an Alder, maybe the other new Alders with their mentors or whatever and kind of come up with your own choose your adventure path. Like, oh, yeah, well, I got assignments onto these committees, so I actually really want to, would love to sit down with economic development and just learn more in general. I don't even know what I don't know. And but for some other Alders, they're like, no, I know I'm just focused on housing and that's like, I trust that other Alder to work on that. So I think maybe maybe something like that would help, um, because I can see the risk of Alders just then not doing anything and not sort of taking the opportunity to to do some learning proactively. Um, so maybe some kind of a outline or personalized pathway kind of, um, you know, just paper to help help get folks started. And I mean, I I'm sure a lot of Alders would abandon it at some point or just modify it and start learning wherever it goes. But it might be a good way to just get get them started and, um, support this idea that you should be reaching out and starting conversations with city staff to learn more.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, Alder Figurall Cole.
My last interruption here, but good, good question for you veterans is, am I required to go through orientations in the Alder? Do I have to have a number of hours that are required for me to do this job?
Alders have very little requirements of anything, so the answer is no.
Why didn't you tell them this?
I I've already received an email from somebody watching the meeting that pointed out that if we started in January, candidates, for example, would have no requirement to go through that. That is correct. I mean, you know, there, we 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 could not require people to go through this orientations. The best we could do is obviously make it attractive for them to do so, meaning, you know, there's good info here.
I I was thinking we just granted said there about, um, people may do, may not do, if you had some kind of like, you know, like any SOP that I develop at the office and we need to train people on, people need to sign up on that training. So I didn't know if we had something, if it's something like that where it's require so many hours of basic training.
It's possible the code of conduct group will put those requirements in place. No, I'm just kidding. That's not happening. And there's no way to do that as a requirement. I just, again, you know, hopefully people understand that, you know, that there's value in that and that you you make it accessible. Yep. All right. Um, I I I have gotten a lot. I think Alder Figur- I I would assume Alder Figurall Cole has also gotten a lot from this. Um, we will, the two of us will regroup and continue our our talks and we will be back here with more things to talk about, but tonight was incredibly helpful. So thank you very much, everybody. Um, uh, rounding up our agenda, um, our, the next, um, item is 72110, which is the council office update. Um, I know Karen sent out, sent that out earlier in the day. It is pretty brief, so I will let her talk about it if she if she would like. And then if anybody has any questions, that'd be great. Um, the the only thing that I'd ask her to skip because it's there and it's a lot is the 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 citizen oversight board. Um, I I suggest people go check out that update, but the other stuff that's gone on the office, I think you could probably go through pretty quickly.
Sounds good. I will share that. Real quick, making progress. Making an offer for legislative analyst, knock on wood. Um, hoping on a mid mid September start. Community engagement specialist position is closed. HR is processing candidates. First round of interviews is likely to start the the week of September 12. Um, if you ordered a parking pass for the Wilson Street Garage, you can pick that up in your mailbox. Debbie sent an email about it. And, uh, yeah, reminder about the get together. I can tell that several of you must have read this when I sent it out because I did receive several updates to the get together e-vite, which was very exciting. So I really appreciate that. And, uh, yeah, and then there's the doodle polls and I have seen, um, a pretty good, um, activity on the doodle polls lately. Uh, I think that we'll be able to finalize sometimes. I want to do that sooner rather than later here, especially for the de-escalation. So I'm, I'm, thank you all very much for your responses. And yeah, please read the details for the COB and if you have any questions, go ahead and 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 reach out.
And I don't want to be, uh, if anybody wants to go through that, raise your hand. Um, you know, Karen will will certainly go through it. I don't want to be dismissive of that, but I know it's getting late. Um, but if people have questions about any of Karen's updates or wanted her to go through that, please, please, please don't be shy. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Stupid question. I have no idea if I answer doodle polls or not because it it completely escapes my mind after I do it. So you'll have to remind me. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Uh, there are no stupid questions. Um, anybody else? All right, um, the last item, um, uh, it would be is our future agenda. Um, I did get together, um, and, uh, uh, we have come up with, um, a list of what kind of the the rest of the year looks like. Um, and so I'm gonna, I can share my screen and show people, give people an idea and get some feedback on what our next few meetings look like. Um, but one of the things you'll see very quickly, we no longer have anything in the in the no assigned column. Um, I also note that, um, this is also now attached to legislature items. So if anybody wanted to follow along um, and and not just stare at the the shared screen about to do, um, you can certainly do that. We are obviously, so I I assume people can see the the spreadsheet. Yep. Um, so we're obviously at the 8:31 meeting and and we had a bunch of things. Um, obviously a bunch of these items are going to have to be pushed to, uh, come back to us, um, which which was expected. Um, I am hopeful, um, I have not checked with IT. Um, and so, uh, if, uh, Director Hattin is watching this, she's going to find out that I'm hopeful that maybe we can get a a legislature, uh, upgrade, um, update at our next meeting, um, if she's available. Um, I I will be sending her a note, um, unless there's objections about, uh, order of stuff and see if she could visit us. Um, at some point, we need to have a discussion about district reports, um, and learn more about that and and try to give a recommendation about what the future of that looks like. Um, we still have some work to do on the referendum. Um, there's an Alder salary budget amendment, um, uh, that Alder Foster is going to, uh, talk to us more about and is working on. And we are, we do have a referral to to us at our next meeting, the 9:15 meeting, which is, um, uh, the the code of conduct, um, which will be back at the council, uh, for action on the, um, on at the meeting on the 11th. And so we have to decide if we're making a recommendation, uh, whether that's to refer again or approve or whatever. But I assume at that meeting, we will get an update on on the committee and its work plan and and what's going on there. Um, further out, um, you know, the goal is in October to be talking about, um, the BCC reorg and the admin support team. Um, we have a policy that's related to conferences that come to CCC. I'd like to talk about that. Um, we're working on, um, CCC being more involved in, um, uh, the Chief of Staff Oversight and Performance Review. So we're giving, um, Karen good feedback. Um, and then further out, um, we've got a discussion about, uh, council creation, uh, uh, and deadlines related to that, a little bit of a talk about. A little bit of a talk about that today, or talk about honoring resolutions. As I noted, you know, I think a few of the things that we talked about today, we'll be back. I mean, we need to talk, continue talking about the new Alder orientation, the honoring resolutions, even the CCEC schedule. When you see all these things, again, it's going to seem like we didn't even meet today. But we did. There will certainly be progress at our next meeting, or our next discussions on that. There'll be more things to talk about. Any questions, thoughts, comments about this? All right, seeing none, I do want to thank everybody for the discussions tonight. They, they were certainly not short, but I do appreciate the length very much. They're very helpful, and these are, these are not easy things. So people provided really good feedback tonight, and we will continue to talk about this stuff, and try to make being an Alder better. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
All right, moved by Vice President Curry, seconded by Alder Foster. See no objection, and assume anonymous consent. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you so much.